Okay.
Oh, Robert, can you pass, can you pass one of these down? Larry, can you pass one of these? Pass one to Howard. Government plant people.
What's your name, my friend?
You might as well have a friend when he hear what he got to say.
You know I work here.
Look, I'm gonna tell you like my little niece, every, every, every birthday, she, I gave her some money one time and every birthday she thinks she gotta get the same thing or more. I start telling I'm waiting for my check. I'm waiting for my check. Wait till I get my check, Didi. My granddaddy want roadblocks. Whatever that is for the, something to add on the city. I don't know. Saint, saints, you know it is. Oh, no.
Um, who's, who's talking about the one town dead down? No, she's not here. I didn't see him. Okay. 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 Greetings. This is our call to order. Notice was hereby given of this regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons for the city of Bastrop this Thursday, April 8, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the courtroom at City Hall. We're going to, this is our call to order, of course, and we're gonna have a moment of silence, followed by an invocation. We're asking Councilman Shaw to lead us in the prayer. And we're also going to have a pledge allegiance and we're asking Mayor Pro Tim, Larry Prater, to lead us in the pledge. Can you all stand, please?
I am as far away as I can before this opportunity tonight to come together and to work on lots of things that's going on within our city and parish. Lord, we just thank you for blessings. Thank you for being with folks who were at substantial loss yesterday. Lift them up, give them courage if they go through this pain. Lord, just again, we thank you for this opportunity that you've given to us. Honor and praise you for it in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Salute, pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Shaw, here.
Mr. Green.
Please.
Mr. Moore, here. Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
Here, President, we have a call.
This meeting is now in session. Announcements. I think we're gonna cover it in the, in the packet, the grant. Our administration, you guys gave, you ladies and gentlemen, gave us permission to apply for a grant. It's a Public Service Commission grant. And we were replacing all of the lights in our buildings and all our ball fields. We applied for two grants, one for last year and one for this year. So this is about half of it that we got and we got notice. We're gonna cover it. Cause I'm gonna ask you, let us put this out for bid since we have $248,000. Entergy, Cleco, Swepco, Atmos and those energy utilities, put money in a fund that cities can apply for and we applied for two. And we, we received a grant for $248,000. We have the letter in your packet. But I'm gonna be asking you for permission to put this out for bids so we can go and get a softball fields at Dotson Park, Forest Park and Carter Park. All of the lights on the tennis courts and that will be converted from 470 volts to 110 volt LED. The LEDs will run at about 10% cost of what the others will and it'll be on 110. So we'll deal with that later. We also received another Recreation Trails grant that was granted for Carter Park. As you know, we're starting construction on Smith Wilson Park. We got a hundred thou, roughly a hundred thousand dollars to build trails. It's, the design is complete with Denman Engineering and construction should be starting in a, as soon as we get the bids, I guess, huh, Ms. Goldman? Yeah. So construction will be starting immediately. We'll have walking trails finally in the city of Bastrop where people can safely go and walk within our parks. And so we got that when the, it was let that we could spend the money on Smith Wilson Park. And we have approval for Carter Park where, between the municipal center. The design is between the municipal center and the, and the apartment complex, east, what's it called? Town East. Town East. That wooded area. And I hope that you guys will see that through. Cause that, that won't be on my watch, the construction, but, but the money is gonna be there. And I hope that we stay committed to having the best parks and that our money will afford. Hurricane Laura update. We have, our debris removal is in full force. We have, the contractors here and they're hauling every day and every day that doesn't rain. And they'll be picking up tomorrow again. And please, if you know of anyone in your districts who, who does not have the money to get the tree from the backyard of the side, we are looking at volunteers and we're looking for volunteers. So if you can, Councilman, comb your districts and look for those trees and let's try to help people get them to the, to the right of way. No construction debris, no washing machines, no, no white goods, no, nothing but vegetative debris. Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Thank you. Item five, approval of previous minutes of the regular meeting of March 11, 2021. Motion is moved by Council Lady Moore. Second by Councilman Locke. Any discussion, all in favor? The eyes have it. The, the minutes are approved. Item six, Financial Committee Report. Resolution 21-1946, Bills and Claims for the month of March 2021. Councilman Shaw, Chair of the, of the Finance Committee.
Mayor, I'd like to offer a, a, my little, excuse me, for adoption of this expenditure for March of 2021.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Shaw. Second by Councilman Prater. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The eyes have it. Item seven, Mr. Reverend Cleveland Holmes, our friend. And the topic that he'd like to discuss is controlled burning in the city limits. Reverend Holmes. And whoever else you want to come to the microphone with you. If you can go to the microphone and state your name and address, sir.
My name is Cleveland Holmes. I live on 406 Tulane Street in Bastrop, Louisiana, in the city limits.
Okay.
And I was talking about controlled burning. I had talked to the fire marshals, I talked to them and they once said I could. And they told me that I had to have a barrel to put it, with the stuff in, or either a fire ring. And it couldn't be no more than three feet or four feet in a square or in a diameter. And I got everything set up. I got my water tanks, I got my, you know, water and everything ready to go. Then they gonna come back and tell me I can't.
Right.
So now I want to know what's the problem. I done spent the invested money in tanks, I done invested money in fire rings. Now they tell me I can't. Now that should've been told to me before I would've invested money in this stuff.
You want it?
You know. Now they said I can't burn.
Yes, Sir Reverend Holmes, that's beyond our control. The, the Department of Environmental Quality has that standard. I tried to get them to allow the city to do the same thing. And when, when Mayor Hawkins brought, no, I'm sorry. Steve Perry was doing the housing complex Briwood Estates, almost an F, you know, down 139 or 425. We tried to get them to give us a permit, give them a permit to use a burn curtain and burn and they would not, they would not allow it. So that would be the Department of Environmental Quality. They control that. You can make, you can petition them a letter to Mr. Chuck Carr Brown, Secretary of DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality in Baton Rouge. I have the address. But they would not allow us to burn nor anyone else to burn. So that's not controlled by the city council. I'm sure that this council probably would, would allow controlled burns. You know, you go right across the parish, the city limit line. And you can do that if you're in a parish. But they will not, if we, if we want to burn our, our landfill, we gotta permit to burn, but we had to be 1,000 feet from the nearest residence. So we had to go on that property and measure and make sure that we were 1,000 feet from anyone else. It has to do with environmental quality because people will burn things like shingles, asbestos shingles and, and other materials that will give off toxins and get in the air and, you know. So that's not controlled by us, sir. If it were, I believe that this council would, would allow and set up some kind of monitoring where our fire department would be alerted and some kind of process. But it's just beyond us, Reverend.
Okay. Could you give me the address or?
I sure will.
And everything that I need to contact them?
Yes, sir. We'd love, we'd love for people to contact them and let them know what a hardship it is for people inside the city to, to burn anything. So, so, but thank you so much and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item eight, Ms. Cindy Hendricks. And her, the item is building located 125, is it 125 or 123? 123, okay. 123, north, yes, North Washington Cross from the post office. Ms. Hendricks, state your name and address, please.
All right, I'm Cindy Hendricks. Actually, I'll state my business address, which is 1905 East Madison, cause we're part of the city. But this, I'm representing Keep Morehouse Beautiful and there's some other people here that is from Keep Morehouse Beautiful. And Vicki, want to state your name?
My name is Vicki Carpenter. I'm with Keep Morehouse Beautiful.
And I wrote this down so I can keep it short. Keep Morehouse Beautiful, with many volunteers and supporters, are very concerned about the building that is owned by Bruce Lowery and is located at 123 North Washington. Do y'all know where all that is? That's the one that's by the post office and in front of the visitor center. Yes, the one with the tape around it. This building was identified and reported to the Department of, the Code Enforcement Department back in February of 2020. A drone we, was used to, on our occasion, when we were trying to do a hometown makeover and it had circled the city. And it was brought to our attention that the roof had already fell in. And so the, since it was falling in, they had stated to me that if it didn't hurry up and get something done to it, the side of the building was more likely to fall. And either somebody could get hurt, but it would be probably, it was gonna be very dangerous. So now that it has fallen in more and bricks are everywhere, this has now been three and a half months. And this is a building that you see every time that you come in to the city. It's across from the visitor center where you have visitors that's coming in to support our community. It's also a place that I know that probably everybody that's here tonight has visited. And that is what is right across the street. So Vicki has some information that she'd like to give y'all.
We wanted to make sure we did our homework that we weren't asking for too much, so we did that. It's in the charter concerning what can be done for dilapidated buildings as well as I've got a copy of the ordinance. And as I understand it, it's in DD's district. So I'm gonna give this to you and impose on you, not really impose, I guess it's your job to please do what you can. Here's the backup. It tells you, in addition, I mean, you can do it on a, you know, the regular routine, but also under section D, it says emergency notice in case of grave public emergency where the condition of the building or other structure is such as to cause possible immediate loss or damage to person, to person or property, the governing body, I think that's y'all, may condemn the building or other structure after 24 hours. Notice served upon the owner or the owner's agent or the occupant if any, an attorney at law appointed to represent the absentee owner. So here you go. I think you've got this, so take care of it.
The last thing I wanted to say, May Madness is a festival that we have here. And it brings hundreds of people here for our community. And so what I would really like to know is when do y'all think that some action can be taken? Because this needs to get done pretty fast.
May I answer that? The historic district, we have an ordinance for the historic district and those buildings around town. I believe that Mr. Lowery, he's got cited, Mr. Pierre has the folder. He's been cited multiple times for that property dating back to 2019 maybe. Mr. Pierre, you see any of that in there?
I did see some.
Yeah. And I believe he came before the, the Morehouse Historic District and he wanted to put a, put something up there and he was denied. And they asked for another meeting Thursday after next. And the historic district has the power to, according to what I read in the ordinance, is to, to use the city's building, co-engineer. And then the engineer would be a liaison between the city, the mayor and the property owner. I believe that's in the ordinance. So I would, I would hope that the, the, are you on the historic district board? Is there anyone on the historic district board here?
She's not here. No, I don't. I'm assuming that it was probably the owner.
But we're asking this, the historic district, which has some governing oversight, as I appreciate it, to recommend to, there's an ordinance I'll give you. What's the ordinance, Pierre, Mr. Pierre?
11.5-21, et cetera.
Yeah, since this is in the historic district, I think the meeting is. So there will be a meeting Thursday after next, I believe. Is that right, Ms. Holmes, historic district? Thursday after next. And, and I would hope that, I would hope that, that the, that the action will be, will come through the historic district. I mean, there's a reason for this ordinance that downtown the historic district has, has input, just like the Jax Building. We'd like their input on what to do with that because the reason we have the historic district is for preservation. And those buildings around town meet certain, a certain criteria. And I just think that that's the proper channel to get it to. Yeah, you discussed that with Doris, she can give you the history. I was expecting her here tonight.
May I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Well, he said that he had been cited many times on there.
I said it multiple, multiple.
Multiple times. Why hasn't something been done?
I think.
If he's already been cited.
I think he's on record to come back. She's already cited him to come back for this, this, this. And the reason that he had contact with her is because she was citing him and he asked to come to the historic district to ask them for permission to wall it up and, and shore it up. And I think he was turned down, if I recall right, when he wanted to wall it up before the bricks fell and do something and because of the facade, the front or something, I don't know, but.
Well, it just seems strange to me that if he was cited and he went to the historic district, which you're saying that's what he's supposed to do, and then they told him no, why hasn't he taken?
He has another plan. He wanna bring his second plan to the historic district, is my appreciation. So the historic district is Thursday after next. And, and I invite, not this coming Thursday, but the following Thursday, two weeks from tonight. Yeah, 22nd. So, so if you will get with historic district members, give them your input on what you suggest, then the city can, you see, we can do buildings. There's the buildings that's not in the historic district, the city council and the mayor should go straight to. But we have a historic district for a reason. They have a function and it's defined in that, that ordinance.
Well, I would hope that if he's already gonna get cited again for not following what the historic district said.
They didn't tell him to do anything, they told him what he couldn't do. See, they didn't give him a command to go do something. They told him you can't do this, so he didn't do it.
So how's supposed to tell him what he's supposed to do?
He's coming back with another, another offer, another, what he wants to do with it. I mean, it's his property. It shouldn't be a danger to people, I agree. However, he wants to propose a plan. And we should give him that due process before the proper committee that's defined in the ordinance and that's Thursday after next, two weeks from now.
Will you take care of it? Okay, thank you.
14 days. Thank you so much. And I'd invite everyone to come to the historic district meeting and give your input.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
So that we can all understand what's, be on the same sheet of music. The way the ordinance is written, Didi, since I know you said you're gonna take care of it, so you can be clear, Mr. Green. The way the ordinance is written is that after historic, historic district cites the, the landowner, there's a process he goes through with the historic district and the historic district can get, like the mayor said, get the fire marshal and get our building official involved, which is Ms., Doris Carter. From there, she would cite that person, that person would have to come before the environmental court. That particular requirement that allowed the city council to take action on that had been removed five, six, seven years ago when they created the environmental court. So it's not an action that the council would take after it goes through the historic district, it goes through code enforcement. If there's a violation, they're from code enforcement to environmental court. Absolutely. And I, and I, that specific provision that you were looking for, Mr. Green, is found in, under Article II Historic District Commission, specifically 11.5-42, Demolition by Neglect. I think that's where they were going with that. And I'll be more than happy to give you a copy of the ordinance.
Thank you. I have mine as executive session regarding ongoing litigation, Lothar, Arnold Lothar et al. versus civil suit number 2008-333. What I would like to do is get rid of some of these other issues. Counsel, you wanna do that now? I mean, we have an audience full. What, what's your timeframe that you think this will take?
Probably 10 minutes.
Okay, well, if we can get a motion to, to go into executive session. It's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Shaw that this body goes into executive session. Ma'am? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the eyes have it, thank you. Thank you.
I think we need to.
Mr. Shaw, Mr. Green, Ms. Moore, Mr. Prater, Mr. Locke, all present, Mayor.
Meeting back in regular session. Item 10, Resolution 21 dash, okay, 21-1947 Resolution, granting preliminary authority for the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, to issue some and deliver limited tax revenue bonds in the amount not exceeding $470,000 in line or more series for the purpose of the project as defined herein, seeking State Bond Commission approval providing for the employment of bond counsel and other professionals, and providing for matters in connection thereof. This is the, uh, the bond for the tax that we just passed by nine votes. So this is to purchase a bond, which is what we just discussed. So we need authority to proceed, granting preliminary authority for the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, to issue, issue the bond. The election has been certified, so...
We need to look for authentic, uh, mayor to, if we got any other funds that we put against this, the rules.
Well, we can't talk about that, Robert. Yeah, but let's just, Robert.
I'm talking about details, I'm talking about general averages.
Okay, general averages, I'm, I'm on that same page, okay? And I hope the council, I believe the council is also. But this is just to stick to this, to stick to...
I'm moving it real fast.
Hallelujah. Mr. Locke, Mr. Locke, Councilman Locke has made the motion.
I think so.
Okay, Councilman Green has seconded that we proceed in the discussion, all in favor? I heard two here, Ms. Green, did I hear you? Uh, but you gotta vote. Uh, okay, Mr. Locke, did you? Miss, miss, okay, well, the eyes have it. The resolution is adopted, thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Did anybody vote no? I just want to make sure. All five said yes.
Row call, row call, Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Shaw, Mr. Green, Ms. Moore, Mr. Prater, Mr. Locke, okay, all...
Hallelujah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, Discussion, Action. Lease purchase the old ditto building to RST Bioscience. You, uh, that's these two guys here, Namdi, I, oh, you...
I was, I was strictly here for that one before.
Oh, okay, Namdi, can you come talk to us for a second?
I'm sorry, I...
Okay, uh, let's, let's introduce you.
No problem, Namdi Thompson with Government Consultants on the item that you guys just voted on, I appreciate you guys voting on it, we'll be making an application to the State Bond Commission, and we'll be back in front of the council again.
I do apologize, Namdi.
No, it's...
Yes, sir. Namdi came all the way over to, to present this, and, uh, we took the vote, but we got it handled, and you, you got your...
We'll start, we've got our marching orders, we'll start working on it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you guys, thank you, council.
Okay, God bless and be safe.
Bye-bye.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, RST Bioscience, if you, if you will look at what I passed out, this, Councilman Green, can you slide that book this way? Okay, four years ago, three years ago, I asked that, that you give us permission to apply, I mean, to, uh, to the USDA for a grant to study what can be done with the ditto building, it's been, it's been there 20-plus years, empty, uh, people have stolen everything out that could walk, uh, it's, it's just a shell of a building, it's a problem in the community, and, uh, so we did a study, a feasibility study, and this is a result of it, and it was very successful, and we actually grew plants in there, it's called aquaponics, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Robert Harding and Mr. Jeremy Peaches, they operate out of Houston, Texas, to come, and they were our bioscientists that actually did the growing, and, uh, and... Is there something else that you need?
Oh, no, sir, I was just speaking.
Oh, okay, alright, they've got a short video, I'm not gonna play it all, it's just a short video, but Google, uh, Robert Harding, and Google Jeremy Peaches, um, Jeremy Peaches graduated from, uh, Prairie View A&amp;M University, is that correct?
Yes, sir, acting coach.
And Mr. Harding, you were...
University of California.
University of California.
If you mind, can we kinda narrate?
Yes, sir, just have, have at it.
So, so with 2018, we, we started coming to Morehouse Parish, Bastrop, to visit, work with some of the farmers as well, buy some of their products, um, I was born in Greenville, Mississippi, so it was great for me to come out and just, and be inside of the delta. This is us visiting a property, this is after we finished installing some of our various systems, and this video is only about five minutes, this is the initial, uh, development of those different systems, a variety of them, just so we could show that, hey, one system don't work, two don't work, we wanted to show all. This is about midway, halfway through, uh, with the hydroponics and aquaponics, so it wasn't just aquaponics, it was both, uh, systems, this is some of the farmers and producers coming through to look through, throughout the building, throughout the growth stage. This is us coming back, actually about a year ago, to work with this, Ashley Armstrong again, and just connecting with some of the farmers, 'cause a big piece of this, of the project, uh, is about connecting with most of the farmers locally and regionally, that's just the shell of the building, afterwards.
We actually set up a greenhouse inside the facility, uh, just to isolate the food from the other, uh, other things that were going on in the building, we, uh, had great success growing aquaponically and hydroponically in the building, the temperature profile and everything was adequate during all times of the year for growing, and it's part of the feasibility study that was done, to analyze the appropriateness of the facility for this type of activity, it looked very promising. And we grew in the hot sun, and when it was nine degrees outside, the water that we caught off the roof of the building had frozen solid, but the fish were still swimming and the plants were still growing. That is a single-purpose building, building, it's not suitable for heavy industry, the floor is only four inches thick, just like the house floor, the foundation, uh, the, the ceiling is too low for any cranes or any kind of, uh, uh, so that's why we've been stuck with this building, and I had a councilman tell me, "Mayor, tear it down or sell it for a dollar" once upon a time, and, uh, so we went and looked, what can, what's the best, highest, and best use, I believe that, uh, uh, Ms. Castile, Dr. Castile, who, who was the, uh, USDA Rural Development, um, Director, the same job that Mayor Hawkins had under President Obama, she had under President Trump, uh, thoroughly liked the idea of having a three-and-a-half acre farm, now, all of the, all of the, I'm sorry, all of the, um, crops basically were destroyed with the ice, and I've got Mr. Joseph, uh, Joseph, can you come up, please? One second. What you have in front of you is, we have been working for several years on the building, and, um, there's just two different groups, and they were, um, they were instrumental in, they got four license, all four license to grow hemp, now hemp is not marijuana, it doesn't have the THC, looks like it, but, uh, um, and Joseph, uh, we met many times, and they, his son's architecture, and, Joseph, can you talk a little bit about what we did? And we, we even got LED to come to Alexandria, you arranged to have a meeting at, uh, at Representative Johnson's office?
Yes.
We had a very productive meeting, but then, uh, on your, on your, uh, handout that I gave you, counsel, if you look at that back sheet, that's a Facebook post that I had, and it has a picture of, it has a picture of myself and, uh, and Daniel Michelle from Louisiana Economic Development who drove to Alexandria for that meeting, the guy on the left there, and I'm sitting, I just cropped Joseph out of the picture, 'cause I didn't have his permission to, to post, but Joseph is sitting right next to me, uh, state your name, sir.
I'm Joseph McConley, and I live in Alexandria, Louisiana, and I had done a study on the northeast quadrant of Louisiana, and, uh, found it has the best soil, uh, in the country as far as growing items. and found it has the best soil, uh, in the country as far as growing items. And industrial hemp was just made legal in Louisiana in first year, 1920. And we were looking at this building to actually do a purpose at that time, and a double purpose, uh, because we knew that these other folks, and you had done some experimenting, uh, on that project, and had determined that there was room enough there either/or, uh, for both. And when we weren't able to get started with it at that time, we went to the city, or to the port of Columbia, and we, uh, contracted for leases on 110,000 square feet, uh, for the production and the storage of industrial hemp for the harvest. However, uh, maybe the Power GB were with me. Those leases were scheduled to be, uh, signed on the 16th of March, and all of us know what happened on the 14th and 15th of March. And so that was when everything shut down, and so all of our plans were abandoned. But what we had done for the building, uh, my son is an international architect, uh, done business in the country of Bulgaria, and does business with the, uh, uh, country of, uh, India. And, uh, we came through, and he started, and this wasn't asked to do by anybody, or did we expect anything from it? Outside of just were available, had the information. But, uh, the complete plans for renovation, uh, are completed, or I say completed, probably 75%. Uh, and they included this project that these gentlemen are talking about. And, uh, we're redoing it so that it would make it feasible for that project to maintain part of the facility, and then also our part of the facility, yeah, okay.
Uh, council, you have...
Yes. And this shows, right here in the aquaponics, uh, area that would be designated, and then this was the other area that we were indicating on using. And of course, those plans right now are, uh, at the time, we had, believe it or not, sixteen, or six thousand acres of farmers that were ready to do the industrial hemp. Well, consequently, that all went away, and at this point, what remains there, that can be a good takeoff either direction. We really don't have a whole lot of interest at this point in, uh, the industrial hemp thing. And if, uh, this building would be able to be converted to their project on maybe a little larger scale, uh, whatever could be worked out with whoever powers may be, uh, those plans are ready, and that's... Those plans bring it up to the Farm Marshal's, uh, rating, and the, include the, uh, uh, sprinkling systems.
Yes.
And all the, and everything that was required by the state to be able to inhabit it. So...
Well, Joseph, I do appreciate you and your son coming up from Alexandria, because you, you know what's possible, and you know the value of agriculture.
Yes.
So, we appreciate you driving up to promote, uh, this. The problem that we have, gentlemen, right now, is that we missed a deadline on a grant, because they did not have control of a facility. You can't apply for a grant unless you got control of a facility. Now, what I'm proposing is that, is that we go on and do that, because we missed a deadline of, uh, 27, was that grant on 27? And it was USDA through the SBA, and asked for your permission to do that, to, to apply for that grant a couple of meetings ago, at least, maybe one or two meetings ago. But we're at a point where these gentlemen operate, you can Google them, they operate, uh, in Texas, Oklahoma, Mr. Harding and his group, Juan, uh, what was the name of the award, and Mr. Bloomberg, the guy that ran for president, uh... Joseph, thank you so much, Mr. McConley. We, we're on first name basis, 'cause we're about the same age.
Okay, what, what was the question, I thought you were...
No, I was just thanking you for, thanking you for coming. Because you, I said, you and I, we call each other by first name, so...
Let me, let me add one thing.
Yes.
If these gentlemen have a project in it, those plans are ready to go, and if they need that for a grant, we would be willing to include that in. And however the amount that was, we had two estimates on the, um, repairs.
Yeah.
And, uh, but right now, their, my son, who is the architect, other son, uh, is the architect, tells me that it's a plus 20% of what it was back two years ago. So we're willing to share with them whatever we have, and it wouldn't be a, from start, it would be to convert to whatever they used.
Okay.
And we'd be willing to, uh, have them get in contact with us. And my son's headquarters are out of Tallahassee, Florida, but most of all of this stuff now is done on a computer. So if, uh, we can help in any way, what we have done, and make a shortcut and expedite this, we'd be glad to do it.
Thank you.
And thank you for...
We appreciate it, and thank you for helping us.
And it's good to see you again.
It's always good to see you, my friend.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I was a little bit better mobile then, but when you do a two-hour car drive, you kinda get stove up.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not but 86.
Thank you, thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. McConley. Um, so, yes, sir. They are, they're gonna be responsible, they're gonna seek grants to do it. Now, let me talk about up to standard. With what they're gonna do, if you look at, there are different models, and, and we have a, we have a, what's called a live binder on aquaponics. I think I shared it with everyone. You go with aquaponics, and it tells you what aquaponics is. We got videos there from Uni, Purdue University. And, Mr. Locke, in Kansas City, we put a lot of different commercial aquaponics on there. If you click the Kansas City one, it's a community thing, where there's no up to standard. You can go in there and clean that place out, and put grow lights, like we use grow lights. And you can operate it like it is, because you don't need air conditioning, you don't need heat. You, you don't have to restore it, now just, just look, it's a greenhouse. Think of it as a greenhouse, but the sun doesn't come in, and you have grow lights. So that's what we use, we used, uh, we used, uh, LED grow lights, and we use fluorescent grow lights, T5s, we used two different varieties. Their grant would get that. Mr. Locke, you could go in that building and not put anything in, the only electricity you need is to run pumps and, and the LED lights, is that correct, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
And so you don't have to go in and re, the vandals, the things took everything out of the building, every, they, they used professional tools to cut the thick tables, and they took all the air conditioning, all the heat, all the, you know, everything metal that they could sell, they took out. This is a greenhouse, just like a greenhouse out, um, out in, you know, on somebody's property. So this is a greenhouse. And they don't have to go standard, you could do a community, they, they have the option of just going in there and building their raft systems, using plywood and liners and that, or they have the option of going first class, uh, and spending, getting, uh, grants for several million dollars, and actually loading the place out like, like they do it at MIT, Massachusetts Institute of Technology. So, so those are options, go ahead, Mr. Harding.
Go ahead, Danny. I wanna make sure that we may have enough time to actually show, you know, some of the things we do outside of that, community-wise, um, school, education, um, but...
I just wanted to mention, too, that, uh, there's currently a, a lot of funding available to the federal government for agriculture, because of things that have happened as a result of the pandemic and climate change, and those other things that we're dealing with as a country and as a world right now. Food is a lot less secure than it used to be, so every government, especially ours, is putting a lot of energy and a lot of finance behind food right now. And Bastrop is very centrally located to be a hub for a lot of the major metropolitan areas in the south. Yes, sir.
We're looking at both options, you know, we pretty much open, we've been here for the last three years. I mean, if, preferably, so we could get the project up and going, some type of relationship with a lease will work. Probably some options, uh, a year or some time where we could be able to ensure that, uh, we purchased that outright. But I, I think our biggest thing is, um, just the community aspect of it.
Beg your pardon? We'll create around 150 jobs, direct employment jobs, and there's gonna be a lot of auxiliary positions that come out as a result of that as well. Oh, yes.
Yeah, so of course, minimum wage, uh, but, you know, we'll need, you know, planters, harvesters, deliverers, uh, for the farmers, they have, for their excess crops, they might be in the field. We're gonna make value-added products as well, so we're gonna have to add processors, mixers, freezers to store those, to be able to put those value-added products back on the market. So, um, directly, uh, starting off, we expect it really in the first six months of just going, to already have nine jobs, you know, from nine individuals. But fully built out over time, it'll be 150, and we'll be able to indirectly create jobs through other businesses and networks.
You have a question over here from Mr. Shaw.
Actually, we, uh, we have a company that's doing, uh, business in other areas right now, so we do have our, our war chest to kind of support our, some of our growth activities and developing prospects such as this. So we're not completely dependent on a grant to function and to, to plan and to grow opportunities, but, uh, to build it out in full-fledged, in full form, we would, we look, anticipate in getting some grant money, yes, sir, that's correct.
So do you have, do you have a lease together for them?
I'm giving, I want you to give me permission to engage Mr. Pierre to do a lease purchase agreement, go ahead. A lease, but they'll have an option to buy it, because if they build it out and spend 12 million dollars, 2 million dollars, or a million and a half, and the building right now, I had, I had an appraiser tell me, they're worth $60,000, okay? Yes, sir. No, that's not true, Mr. Locke, it's structurally sound, it's got beams, it has beams, it's structurally sound, you need to go in it. The building is steel, it has steel roof, and it's, it's in perfect structural condition. No, no, there's no rust, Mr. Locke, you need to go in it. The building is surprisingly structurally sound, it has beams, there's no, there's no rock, there's no, there's, but you've been in it. Yeah, and Mr. Prater, you've been in it, you just wouldn't eat none of the vegetables. You will, you will, but I'm, I'm asking you to give me permission to get with Mr...
Have we authorized somebody to inspect the building, make sure that everything is in order for us to lease, lease this out?
They, they're gonna have to have a certain amount of liability insurance, they're aware of that.
Carry, carry, carry 2 million dollars worth of liability insurance, and we will acquire more if need be.
Liable for what, what specific one? In, in any contract that would be done either lease or lease option, uh, the city would not be responsible, uh, it would be the leaseholder responsibility, I would make certain of that. We're not gonna take on any premises liability if we lease a building. I, there, no contract has been created as we speak, you follow me? I don't, I don't see the cost aspect of it, you know, but I mean, the, the final agreement... Let me try to help with that, Ms. Moore, if you will. Just like when people come here, like Mayor Hawkins came to build that complex that they just got funded for $660,000 over on there, they come before you, because you're gonna be the council, and oh, by the way, congratulations on your reelection. Okay, so you are gonna be here for four years, and, and congratulations on that. So, they will be asking you, they'll say, we wanna apply for a grant to so-and-so, and, you know, you, they're, they're gonna be asking for your blessings, because that's what, uh, that's what they expect. They'll, they can't get a grant, and you guys don't own them here. So that's, that's a good question, Ms. Moore. Yes, Mr. Moore, I mean, Mr.... Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, uh, council. And by the way, uh, they are partnering with Ms. Ashley Armstrong, she's been working with them, Harper Armstrong's daughter, since 2018. And, uh, she was slated to be the farm manager, and the, the, but, I'm sorry, that's, that's, go ahead, Mayor Mayo.
What am I gonna do with him? Jamie Mayo. Look, I just wanna mention, I know Mr. Pierre mentioned the liability department, he's the attorney, but if there's any concern, uh, the city of Bastrop could be used as a, um, insurable interest. Would y'all have any problems with insurable interest? Yeah, they could make the city of Bastrop insurable interest, so they could take you off the... Yeah. So, so if you, if you sued, and anybody wanted to bring the city of Bastrop into it, it'd be covered under their liability.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. But give me permission to engage, yeah. No, no, we'll bring it back, and, and we'll probably, I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask you to delay something on here, and, and we might ask you to come back in the next week or two for a short special meeting. Short, very short.
Uh, Mayor, if I may ask, who's the council member district that's in? Do we have enough time to at least go through some of the slides?
We'll have a long meeting, we'll have a long meeting, but let me state something. If you Google Mr. Peaches, he's constantly on TV in Houston Market, they are dynamic young men, they're being very modest here. What was the Bloomberg competition?
It was actually an international competition to develop brownfields. We competed with 70 different other teams of company to get the right to develop this 300-acre plot eight miles from downtown Houston, and we won the competition, us and our partners, to develop the property. We decided to lease it, uh, two months ago, and we're doing a pool of permits right now.
And that's a former landfill, isn't it?
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, but Michael Bloomberg, uh, spends a ton of money around the world, and he had this global competition, and you, you can Google these gentlemen, you'll see Robert, you'll see them sitting at the table as they received the award with the mayor of Houston at the head, and, and, I mean, they are dynamic, and they are, they are for real. But Google them, welcome to Google them, and... What's your option?
With the option.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved by Council Lady Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke, it's in his district, and third by D.C. Green. But we've been working hard and, and growing stuff in there for a long... Oh, yeah, Robert, thank you, we got a motion and a second, and discuss, all in favor? You may, Mr. gentlemen, congratulations. You may, Mr. General, congratulations. Oh, by the way, they have offered to move their headquarters of RST Bioscience here. And that goes into, into what we're doing with Southern University, to move here in Southside and do some things in Southside School. We've all been working together, Prairie and A&amp;M, Southern University, University of Arkansas Pine Bluff, with Aqua Culture. And we've been doing this for a long time, and it works. And, and another last thing, on your, on your maps, that, on your maps, when we talk about, we're gonna delay this. But on the maps that, this map, did you all get this? Let me pass this, I'm sorry, Robert. Can you pass two of those down? We're gonna, I'm gonna ask that you delay this item because of Mr. Locke, and, and pass, pass that.
What item would this be?
That's gonna be item with the, the land, the cemetery. And I want you to go by HB items, there are no plots left out there. We're all the way out to the road, basically. There's only a few plots left. There's almost nowhere to bury anyone, so this is urgent. But I want you to, Robert called me over the weekend, and I didn't get, get you because Jeff was tied up, Robert. So I want everyone to go, every councilman, Councilman Green's been. And I've called other councilmen to try to get you to come. And two of the property, forty acres, plus a building that was a former transportation. But I'm asking you to buy as a design loan property. Public Works, we need to lock up our equipment. They've got bays that they can lock up our new stuff, our new excavator, and our new bone curtain, and our new dump truck that we're gonna get. This building's big enough to, to house that stuff, and we'll, because we're landlocked over here, we don't have any room over here on West Madison. And all we got is sheds, and we're getting vandalized all the time. Memorial, oh, we wanna do Memorial Park also. And, and I thought, do we have that on, on the agenda?
No, we did that last month.
We, for the bids?
Right.
Okay, yeah, we put out bids to clear that. And we're at item twelve. Okay, now, I do not have, Mayor Mayo, you've been working with AAA. And I want to delay item twelve, that's to lease the ThermoLogic building. You know, we have AAA Gateway Housing out there. They're located in a building, and they're manufacturing housing, modular homes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Thank you all, thank you.
They're manufacturing, and they need a building. The ThermoLogic building's been closed for a long, long time. We got an electrical panel that we've got to repair. And we want to have a prospect kind of ready before we spend the money to repair that. And they're interested in leasing that building because they have lumber and different stuff that they bring in. And they can stage stuff there, and then bring the, bring the, bring their materials down the street quarter of a mile. So that's what that's about. So I'm gonna ask that, that we table that until Mayor Mayo gets through with his, he's working on that, is that correct? Counselor?
That's correct.
Okay, he's working on that with AAA. So I'm asking you to, to delay that. Can we get a motion to? Okay, be moved by, moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Green, that we table it, all in, discussion all in favor? Okay. Discussion action, item thirteen, memorandum of understanding with the Morehouse Parish School Board to lease Baron Park. Now, the Morehouse Parish School Board maintains Baron Park. They have a lease. And I think you have got any packet. And I've been talking with School Board Attorney Steve Katz. Because if we're going to have tournaments here and have the best ball fields, and if we can hopefully get a, maybe a force, we can maintain all these fields, and we can have tournaments here and bring, Ms. Hendrix was here just earlier. If we had tournaments, small tournaments, we can't do the sixty-four team thing like they do in Ruston at their thirty-six million dollar sports complex, or like Stowson does at their sixty million dollar sports complex. But we can bring tournaments because people want to play. They want to play ball. And they want to play ball before they go to the big tournaments. So we can bring money to Bastrop. And Baron Park is an old-style park. It's, it has a lot of charm. And if the city partnered with the school board, then the, the school team plays, how many games did they, about six, seven, eight, maybe? Yeah, but no more than ten a year. Before the school, high school? Here, I'm talking about here. Before us, they played six.
Because sometime, when I was playing, we used to host tournaments at the high schools, so, you know, when you host a tournament, it's three games, for the big game.
Right.
It used to be more than ten games.
Yeah, but we can, we can host, we can host tournaments here with different groups, the Dawson All-Stars. Ms. Carolyn Harris, you've been in Baron Park, haven't you? Yes, it is a real homely style of the old parks. They're very rare now, you don't find them. And it would be a tremendous asset to work on a memorandum of understanding between the city and the school board. Because right now, they are, it's being used maybe ten days a year, except for practice. And of course, the Bastrop High Team would have precedent. If they had games, they had practice, then those during baseball season, then they would get the first, the first. But I'm asking you to allow us to do a memorandum of understanding to lease, and I'll bring that back to you when we get it done for you to approve. Well, memorandum of understanding's gonna outline who has what duties and who has priority playing and those kind of things. It'll be an understanding.
We gotta, we gotta add on something that we still have to do?
No, it's just an agreement. Mr. Pierre's gonna put together the agreement. And Mr. Locke, I mean, not Mr. Locke, Mr. Katz. Go ahead, Robert.
I'm just saying, right now, we're shorthanded with our personnel. Now we're gonna add more jobs to that.
Well, item fourteen, item, item, the, the, I'm still asking for the best machine in the world to maintain, to maintain that. I'm still asking, look like y'all would give a man his last meal, you know? On the way to the, on the way to the, you know, to meet my maker. Please give me my last meal, a thirty-two thousand dollar meal. We just got one point one million dollars in care sack that Ms. Lenore and Ms. Goldman worked hard to get. Yeah, okay, we got twenty, twenty point seven million. Please give me my last meal. Discussion action, memorandum of understanding. Let's, let's do that, thirteen. Do we have a motion on thirteen?
So the motion would be Pierre to.
To, to, yeah, to, to, to craft a memorandum of understanding. It'll come back next time to, for you to approve. Okay, motion made by Councilman Green to craft a memorandum. You're not approving it. We're, we're just giving us permission to, to prepare the memorandum of understanding, not to. Not to approve it, it's to, it's to have an additional park that's gonna be the best park that we have. Okay? That's what we're doing. This memorandum of understanding, if it's approved. Yeah, and come back and say, here's the item, here's the. You'll get the vote on it again. If we, if you like it, vote yes, if you don't. But I hope that we have the vision to know the power of tournaments. The average person who goes to a tournament, and Ms. Carolyn, the average family that goes to a ball tournament spends five hundred dollars. My daughter, Materia, and my wife, Anya, is left to go to Houston this morning for a soccer tournament. Where Southern beat Prairie v. A&amp;M today, and my granddaughter is on the Southern University soccer team, won to nothing. They spend five hundred, they stand at the courtyard, they're doing this, they're doing that. And, and we'll have an economic development piece here if we, if we just take advantage of it. So it's been moved by Councilman Green. Will you at least let me bring a agreement back to you so you can see whether you wanna do it? Can we get a second just to get an agreement drawn up to see whether you want to do it? Okay, I guess that one dies for lack of a second. Okay. Discussion action. As this council is aware, we have a, we have a park committee for Smith-Wilson Park that, where Chuck, Chuck's, Chuck Wilson's daughter is, I believe, the chair, and Smith-Wilson is moving. But in two thousand seventeen, this administration applied for a grant to the National Park Service. And we were one of twelve communities in the country to get the design grant, where the park, the park service sent a representative from Monmouth Cave National Park in Kentucky to Bastrop. And they've got CAD people and architectural people who draw stuff and design things. And we have a master plan for parks that I hope you don't let die. And to assist, I would like to appoint a park commission, just like we have an airport commission, okay? To, to, to study and you can engage with, and it will take the pressure off of city government to monitor these grants that we, that we've gotten, and the ones that are still to apply for. So I hope that you all don't let this good stuff die. No matter who's the mayor, I hope that you all, go ahead, Dean. I'm asking you to come up with a person to name at the next meeting to be on the parks commission. We have nine parks. Our plan is to tie them all together. We have Elm Street being paved this fall, and part of November, December, and Van Avenue. We traded those streets for what we owned in Naff Avenue from Carson Road, Beckera. Yeah, that's what I want, Robert. Yeah, I want you to come up with a name for the next meeting, and I'm gonna appoint, you guys got five, I'm gonna appoint two people to that commission. That, that will. Yeah, well, you, you guys can decide who you want. It would be nice, it would be nice, because you got parks all over town, and what I wanna do is share with you, I wanna share with you the plan that was put together by the National Park Service, and the idea, we got these walking trails, and they're gonna lead and connect all the parks. And we've got Elm Street, and we, we're applying for complete streets. Now, I don't know what I told you this last time, but we were one of three communities in, in Louisiana. The, the Federal Highway Administration liaison. Okay, but, but you guys got some responsibility, but we'll talk about complete streets, and please don't let this die during this next administration. Okay, you got the motion? All in favor? The eyes have it. And.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second? Okay, thank you, Ms., okay. Yeah, well, I thought it, okay, now that was thirteen, the NOU?
That was the same.
Y'all didn't do, okay. So now please submit your names, because we wanna meet with this commission so we can lay out everything that's been planned for our parks, okay? That the National Park Service, with tennis courts, and we have an LED lighting of the tennis courts and the ball fields. We're replacing everything. So that's two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Okay, discussion, action, resurface tennis courts in Carter Park.
Mayor, I'm leaving, we, we proceed with the project on tennis courts.
That too, that too, yeah. No, look, it's, we can add that right now, just write down the, and Dawson Park. Okay, tennis court, all our tennis courts. Robert?
Mayor.
Give it to me. I'm congratulating you on making that motion. Well, okay, we'll add it next time. We'll add it, we'll add it next time. Thank you. Now, now, I've had discussions with Councilman Green particularly about VersaCourt. VersaCourt is a service, source, is a, and I've got the, Ms. Goldman, did I send you those bids? Yeah, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. It's VersaCourt, I'll send you the information. But first thing we, we need to do is, and I don't think I needed your approval just to, just to sand them down and get, get the Cracksfield, your tennis court. Pickleball, pickleball. Yeah, pickleball, it was the hottest sport in, in America.
Yeah, yeah. Y'all out of order right now, y'all got, y'all out of fifteen.
Okay, let's go, fifteen. Resurface tennis courts, we had a first, a second, all in favor? Okay, so we got that, thank you. Discussion only, ShotSpotter. People are talking about crime. We were talking about ShotSpotter in twenty seventeen. That's the technology where you take a square mile and you spend forty thousand dollars, and I proposed this back in twenty sixteen. And you do this in areas where you have shooting, where people just go pow, 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 pow. Ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's just people shooting in the air, or, or just hearing, wanna hear themselves, and, but it makes people afraid. It, it, it creates terror, and it's just an uneasy feeling in two o'clock in the morning to have that happen. So the ShotSpotter technology is forty thousand dollars per square mile. And they erect microphones, and they triangulate, use, using trigonometry, determine exactly where the shot came from. And they can also tell you some other things about it. Now Monroe, Mayor Mayo, you were doing ShotSpotter, right? And did you purchase it? You spent the forty thousand while you were there? Now, Mayor Mayo probably heard us talking about it in twenty seventeen and got, I'm just kidding with you. But they had the money down, they had about fourteen million dollars surplus. So that's something that I want you all to think about for the next meeting. It has, and then you incorporate cameras, and you see a person leaving a scene and that kind of stuff, or councilman. But if you're serious about crime, you know, then we'll have that on the agenda for next time.
There was one time when we had a group being, that whoever was on shift, you know, police, that they would just take a minute and all of them would get the number off the phone.
Yeah, and we did. Right.
Yeah, the number system on those posts don't work anymore.
They don't work.
Because energy did away with those posts, so when you call that number, they have no idea.
Right.
They told me though, if you put the green tape around, and they ran around, they see it.
Yeah.
Go of anybody, we can go, we can go on their website and put it in, and they'll fix them. So if y'all got any, if you'll just text. So if y'all got any, if you'll just text me or, you know, call me, we'll do it.
Well, we got, went around and something like that I knew was out, I called in, so you just let you know.
Yes, sir, we can go online, I did this morning, somebody called in, that's, that's what they did, you gotta have a 911 address.
And you can report that on our website, there's a, a place on our, on our website under Public Works where you can report potholes or anything. So on the City of Baster website. And let me advise you, you can get an app called Solocator, S-O-L-O-C-A-T-O-R, that will... Yeah, you can get it on that phone. And what it'll do, Mr., 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 Mr. Prater, is, you see that's GPS?
I can't do that.
Yes, you can, just press it, just like you press your camera icon, it's a camera. And it'll give the GPS coordinates of where you are. You're at 90, 32, not, 778. Okay. So, so ShotSpotter is just discussion, no action. If you want a webinar, if you want to participate on a webinar, I can arrange webinars with the ShotSpotter people. If you give me the time that you can, can just get on your computer and it's like we did with the, with the other thing, you and Mark. Okay, 17. Discussion action, permission to advertise for bids of grade all. Robert, you talked about a grade all for quite a while. You know, the one we got, time we get it out of the shop, it goes back in, it's old.
That's why we need a brand new one.
Yes.
And we don't need finance, we need to pay for...
Out of street?
Yes, that's where it's going, Mr. Goldman, must say we need delta.
Right, streets.
We, we've taken out too many indebtednesses because we don't, you know, go to the reason.
Yeah. That's the best way, you save interest if you can, if you can do it.
Over the five years, I think it's $60,000 in interest.
Yeah, well... Ask Ms. Goldman if the street fund can handle it.
The street fund can handle it, but we, we'll need to bid it out.
Yeah. So can we get you, can I get you a motion for that, Robert? Okay, it's been moved. Now, I got some...
We go ahead and purchase the grade all.
The motion's to be to give me permission to advertise for bid.
Now, I met, I met with the Scott Truck and Tractor Representative today, oh, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have a motion?
Motion, second? So it's been moved by Councilman Shaw, second by Council Lady Moore? Okay, and discussion, all in favor? Okay, all right. Okay, now, the model, if we specify a model, I would like for you to specify a 20... No, no, I'm saying when you, do your bids, Scott has one that's a 2020 model, but it's brand new. And the 2021s are about $20,000 more, Robert, since you want to. The 2021s are like $290,000. I mean, it's the same truck.
I just want to make sure that we order...
It's brand new.
Depending on who, who gets the bid.
Yeah. Well, it's state contract, so it's a set price, so...
You sure about that?
It's state contract, I believe, isn't it, Ms. Goldman?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's state contract. So they have a state list and they, the, the price is on the website, but I just want to make sure that we put in there 2020 or 2021. Okay. Okay. Permission advertised. So did that, all in favor? Did we do that? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, resolution 21-1935, a resolution of the Mayor and Board of All Persons of the City of Baster, State of Louisiana, to authorize the Mayor of City of Baster to execute an Act of Sale Deed and Other Closing Documents on behalf... Oh, okay, well, I, you, you, can, can we get a motion to, to skip it, to table it? Was that a motion, Ms. Locke? Moved by Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Shaw, that we tabled this, all in favor? Okay, let's table it for you to get more information.
I'll give the vote, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, I'm just going, trying to get out of here. Okay.
Now, realizing now, if we approve this, there's gonna be a lot of money out there if we get that.
Yeah, let's take the vote, let's take the vote, all in favor? To table this, to table it. All in favor? Okay, Robert, to address what you're saying, please factor in the cost of, how much do we charge per, per grade, Ms. Goldman? $410?
$410, 300 we keep, 110 goes to the recording fee at the courthouse for the deed.
How many grades did we sell last year, Ms. Goldman?
Ms., what was...
Yeah, I'm just asking a question. Okay, well, I just want you to think about, I want you to think about the revenue, okay? Graveyards generate revenue. Okay, meetings that you can't discuss stuff, that's government for you. Okay, so that's table. 19, discussion action, permission to purchase ABI force, Z23 laser ready with wheels. Okay. Okay, the motion is made by, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we got a million, $100,000 in CARES Act. We didn't operate swim, yeah, go ahead. Second, thank you. Move by, move.
Y'all on the, um...
You're on the ball, number 19.
Jesus Christ.
Mr. Green made a motion to purchase it.
Okay, well, if 19 is not gonna happen, then I, this mayor does not want to negotiate with the school board on Baron Park. Because without the equipment, it's, it's mute, it's a mute point.
That was voted down seven months ago. It has been...
You're out of order, Ms. Pet, you're out of order. That's my prerogative because it's the right thing to do.
No, it's not the right thing.
That's your opinion. I am bullheaded.
You can go ahead and say.
Ma'am, you're out of order.
Yes, I am.
You are, yes, ma'am, thank you. And it's my prerogative to bring it up because it's, it's the right thing to do. Okay, so we'll just disagree on that. So that's out for lack of a motion, it's dead. I will not bring it before this, this council again. Praise God, amen. Okay.
Number 20.
Number 20. If y'all don't know, discussion action, permission to advertise for bids for energy-efficient lighting, LED in Dotson Park, Forest Park, Wilson, and Smith-Wilson and Carter Parks. This is the grant that you have a letter. What's the item number on there?
Number 20.
Number 20. I applied for this grant because I wanted us to have the best parks with the best lighting, the best equipment, and so we could bring money to town. And, and of course, you can't win them all. And item 20.
Now, there's gonna be accountability back to Officer Campbell.
No, 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 it's not accountability, it's a grant that, that energy, energy companies pay, give a certain amount for, for municipalities and school boards and police juries to apply to become more energy efficient. The second grant replaces every light in every building that we have.
But haven't we got a, a community group or this park, this park action item we have already?
Well, yeah, but this is already done. I applied for the grant, in fact, I wrote two grants with a consultant that we have. And we, we submitted two grants, one for last year, and it's gonna replace every single light. Right now, we got lights, you flip the switch on, it takes 15 minutes for them to warm up, and it burns a ton of energy. So, so I applied for this and we got $248,000, a quarter of a million dollars for our parks. So the master park plan called for certain things, that's why I was advocating them over and over, because it's all part of the jigsaw puzzle. Okay, so permission to advertise for bids. I have the letter here and it reads, Arnold Henry Cotton, Town of Baster, approval of your 2021 Louisiana Public Service Commission Public Entity Energy Efficiency Grant, Dear Mayor Cotton, he scratched through and he said, Henry, dear Henry, I am pleased to inform you that I have selected your energy efficient project for the Town of Baster for funding of $248,928.88 as part of the Louisiana Public Service Commission's Public Entity Energy Efficiency Program. This grant from Louisiana Public Service Commission District Five Office is based upon your personal commitment, your proposed, your proposal submitted in March of 2020 for lighting improvements at Dotson Park, Smith-Wilson Park, Forest Park, and Carter Park. We've attached the general terms of this, and now since we got the grant and the authorization to spend the money, I would like to fast track this so we can get those lights out in those parks on the ball fields and tennis courts as fast as possible. So I'm asking for... There's no lights out there. There's no lights, it has to be existing lights, they can't do new lights, you can't put new poles up. So we got those old poles, and you lean up against one, you might get shot, I did, by a tennis court, you know, so... Well, they're gonna replace, they're gonna replace the lights themselves.
I'm talking about the bulbs, no, I'm talking about the poles.
Well, they're gonna replace, the only way we get this grant, with the poles, it was like a half million dollars, Robert.
And I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
I'm saying if we got some poles that are bad, let's get them out.
Yeah, okay, that's a good thing, that's a good thing, you, that's a great point. If we got some poles that need to be replaced, we're gonna replace them. Okay, that is super. Yeah, we can add it out, talk to Ms. Goldman and see if we can stand it, if we can, if we can stand doing some stuff like this. So, yeah, y'all just talk with Ms. Goldman. Okay, so, so we have, did we have a motion? Okay, it's been moved by Council Lady Moore, second by Councilman Shaw, is that correct? Okay, that we do this for bids, how many times we have to run advertising, twice?
Three times.
Three times, okay. So we can run the ads three times and then we'll get the bids and set up. Well, the company that does it is gonna come self-contained, they'll be licensed bonded, and the plan's already been, the, the grant, we specified every single light pole. So they're gonna do everyone, it's gonna totally transform the way it looks, it's gonna be like daylight out there, and then we got cameras, high definition cameras, HD cameras that can zoom in, okay?
Motion second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor? Okay, the ayes have it, that is approved, thank you so much. Okay, discussion action, item 21, permission to advertise for bids for fire apparatus. Derek Green, DeeDee, no, I'm sorry, that's, that's you on the next one. Thomas Crowder, you're not the fire chief, are you? Who's it, Crowder?
Yeah, we're talking about Crowder. My name is Fire Chief Thomas Crowder. Luckily, luckily, guys, this don't take too long, because this is a grant that we have applied for through L-GAP that we received. We already got the money in, now we just need to put out bids. What it's actually for is for fire apparatus, air packs. It's for air pack breathing apparatus, for us to be able to enter buildings and stuff like that when we're fighting fire. Certain amount of time you have to replace those things because they get out of date, and this is a grant that we will have to replenish our supply of air packs and air bottles. So we asked, I think it's 65,000, I think.
60.
60, there you go, Ms. Sandra. I should have done that first, Ms. Sandra?
Okay, who made the motion? Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Shaw? Okay, and discussion, all in favor? The ayes have it, thank you. Class one, Fire Chief Crowder. Okay, discussion actions, wanted to establish City of Baster cleanup, Derek, DeeDee Green.
Yes, I was, I was just gonna jump in so we can purchase those big trash bins because I don't know about everybody's different minds, we have a lot of like sofas and mattresses so we can have someone that can put them set outside the road because the trash bins are not gonna be loaded. I said, I can't speak for y'all, but I'm speaking for mine.
Well, let's talk, let's talk about that. Let's talk about that. You're talking about putting out like trash bins. Dumpsters, okay. You know what you're getting into. Yeah, well, the police jury has the, I mean, this is really a police jury responsibility to do trash. Now, what, what I'm asking, I didn't know this was on here, Dee, Councilman, but what I was hoping that we could do is, the police jury passed a law, an ordinance, that penalizes people with trash out in front of their houses that's not in one of those green waste management deals. And they, the $250 fine. They had a public hearing, they're not enforcing it, they passed a law and it affects the City of Baster more than it does anybody because people here can't burn. So people outside the city limits can go out and get them a barrel and burn it in their backyard. So what I wanted to do, and I've talked with, with, with Dallas Carter about this, and Ms. Lenore, is I want those people sighted under the, under the law. Now, wait, hold it, I'm saying you go by a house and you see trash, three or four things out, right? And they could sight them and we could find out what they're, now, look, this COVID is still affecting people, some people out of work, we don't know. I'm not trying to get everybody in court to pay $250. I do, I do, and they dumping it on K Street, yeah, they dumping it, and they could take it right down to the parish and pay a fee and, and get it done. So the parish has a, but people, you're right, they are dumping couches and things. They've always done it. Now, if you, now, what I wish, you remember we were going to DeSoto Parish and look at their, their operation, and I brought some video back for you of how they have their yard, and you just drive around, you could do couches and all that stuff. But we are not the trash...
Yeah, I know, but we keep saying the police jury, but we want to, the point is, I just mean...
I agree, they think it's our responsibility. The police jury, right, the police jury does a poor job of administering their, their trash program as it relates to the City of Baster, we know that. I've talked with police jurors, I've talked with the president of the police jury about the problem. We even offered to pick up, take our limb loader and pick up some of this stuff and take it down to the, Mr. Green, that might be a, a deal where we can get our limb loader in a big truck, a $14,000 dump truck, and, and start taking stuff down there, okay? I'm saying it's, we should do that. I'm, I'm agreeing, if you guys...
We can't keep running, we can't keep running around, we can't keep running around looking all this outside the road.
Right, and telling, and I call the police jury and say, hey, this is... No, we can do that, we can do that, but just know we don't have a waste permit, and when I offered to do that, they said no. They got me on the phone with the, with the lawyer, Mr. Jay Mitchell. And, and we offered, I offered to take the limb loader, and people, back when this first started, if people put their stuff in a heavy, heavy bag, we weren't gonna pick up the trash containers, we're gonna drive down with the limb loader and load this stuff and take it down and dump it, and they told me they didn't want us to do that. Okay? I mean, I, I made that offer early when this... Okay, I mean, I, I made that offer early when this trash problem first started, that we would take the limb loader, but we weren't going to pick up any trash containers, nor were we going to pick up those little cheap bags, the little cheap white thin bags, because they would burst. So we, I made that offer to the police jury, to the president, and to, and, and we talked to the attorney, and they had other reasons for refusing us. So it's not like we haven't made an attempt, but it's their jurisdiction, and we don't have a landfill that we can put this stuff in. We have to take it to them.
You can't keep allowing them to, that I say to be like this.
I agree, I agree. Well, why don't you, why don't you make a motion to, if it only makes agenda, to go to the police jury and tell them that we are not taking it anymore? I mean, in other words, you can do that. No, I'm just saying, this council can say enough is enough, and, you know, cite the, uh, cite the conditions, because they have advocated their responsibility, and people think that it's, this.
But they also say that they're not picking up anything that's in the, 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 so they're moving, they're moving what they said, right?
But they're still responsible for solid waste, and people are responsible. Yeah, I'm saying, but people, they're responsible for disposal of all solid waste. Now, right, they have a ninety-six gallon container, seven dollars a month for the first one, twelve dollars for the second one, a month. So big families with no income, it's COVID time, then, you know, you, we need to find out what their means are. Mr. Pierre can sift through, and whatever court will haul them into to enforce that ordinance, that two hundred and fifty dollar ordinance, they'll get their attention when they're hauled into court, and the landlord, we could go after the landlord, and the landlord will, that's the property owner. Is that true, Mr. Pierre?
We need some right now.
Mr. Pierre?
That is somewhat true, Mayor, yes, sir.
So we could go after the landlord, and that's what I, what, what's your, you want to?
Yeah, what about couches and stuff like that?
We're talking about all of that.
That's what I'm talking about now.
Yeah, we do, yeah. We're talking about all of it, all of it.
I, I took a few days off to clean out our own house, and I hired two nephews with two pickup trucks and trailer, and stuff that's household garbage, when you go into the parish, there's nice setup.
Yeah.
If it's regular household garbage, that doesn't go in your green can over, they let you in the gate, it's wide open, you go there, you just dump it yourself, and you're not charged. But if you've got a couch or trailer, something that's not regular household, right there at the gate is their little house, it's got a little window, the lady's there, if it's just a pickup truck, she charges fifteen dollars. If you've got a trailer, doesn't matter how big the trailer is, don't matter how much you will lay on it, it's twenty dollars. And you give them the twenty, you keep driving past the little house, and they've got guys there that tells you where to park, and you go there, and they help you unload it. The, the only thing about it, they're not open on Saturdays, it's Monday through Friday, seven-thirty to three-thirty, but they have a nice setup. Now, I know a lot of people don't have pickup trucks. I don't have one, but I found some, and I just went ahead and took care of my business.
Mr. Green.
Fixed income.
Mr. Green.
I'll, I'll, I'll pay for a load for you.
That would be good for you to champion, because you could, you could get the, the city, uh, limb loader or whatever, and do just that, and, uh, so if you want to champion that, that effort to, uh, to do that, then we can, now, we got to talk to the police jury and see if they'll take it, because before they wouldn't take it, when I made the offer. So we can go to them and say, what if we do it? And bring it down there, because they don't need to charge the city, because they're getting a half-cent sales tax to dispose of that stuff. Okay, alright, you're going to do that? Okay. And we'll. Yeah, putting dumpsters out. When we can use city resources, but they turned me down when I made the offer, okay, to pick up stuff and take down there. Okay, um, that was.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, discussion action?
Twenty-three.
Established, oh, that's you, Derek, Derek. Are you satisfied with this, Councilman? No, I'm saying with the, with the plan to, for you to spearhead and do that. You got that?
Can, can we?
I also think we need to have an ordinance made of, and put some details in the trash and, and, and.
Uh, Count, uh, can you, can we enforce the police jurors' ordinance, uh, in the city, uh, council?
I don't know if we can enforce their ordinance in the city, uh, but I think it will start with trying to force them to do what they're obligated to do. Don't we pay them?
Well, half-cent sales tax pays them.
Well, I mean, they're being paid.
Yeah, they're getting paid, they're being paid to do it.
Yeah. So, maybe.
Okay, so do you want that ordinance and maybe adopt it as a city ordinance? You want, want me to do that, Mr. Locke?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get a copy of the ordinance, and we'll have to have a public hearing on it.
Mayor, let, let's include Keep More House Beautiful in the issue.
Sure.
Where they, more like, they did.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Parts?
I was hoping they were already involved.
Yeah, they are, but I'm talking about.
Yeah, well, well.
Just a more house though.
Yeah. Now, Mayor Mayo, you have, and, and I, I brought this up before. If you go down Renwick Street, Powell Avenue, and you get to the church, Powerhouse Church, there's signs that you had done about this area is, uh, cleaned by this group, and it's Monroe Proud Clean Something that you have. DeeDee, I've shown you pictures of that.
Of what?
I've shown you pictures that Mayor Mayo had in Monroe, where the different communities had groups. If you go to the mall and go down Powell, there's a Powerhouse Church, there's a sign right at the church, and I brought the sign back to try to steal that idea from Mayor Mayo, and it was community groups that was responsible in that. So. Okay, twenty-three, discussion action, uh, dedicate AT&T proceeds to fund playground and exercise equipment and things with parks. We have a, we signed a contract with AT&T to put a five G tower at the parks. We know over time, not every administration will take care of park equipment and keep it upgraded. And I would like to see if this council would entertain the idea, the tower is in the park, it's going to generate, and it's not just for Carter Park, DeeDee. Uh, Councilman, no, I'm just, I'm reading your mind. No, it's not just for Carter Park. I know you are, okay. So, since that money is not coming in, we signed a thirty-year deal with AT&T. The, the deal starts with nine hundred dollars per month, or ten thousand eight hundred dollars income a year. Over, now, every five years, or was it five years, we get an increase?
Yeah, it was, it was staggered that way.
Staggered, so you get a, like a five percent increase every, so the minimum, if it didn't increase, it would raise three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars over, over the thirty years. But there are grants you can apply that's unlimited, but you can only do one park at a time, one year. But it requires a match, and what I'm thinking about is this council going into the next administration with this mindset that you need a match, a fund match of a certain percentage, and this fund could be used as that match to get larger grants. Not to say you're only going to buy ten thousand eight hundred dollars worth of, uh, exercise equipment or whatever, but if you replace your swings and things, and this will sort of endow, you know, you have an endowment. It would sort of be an endowment or a foundation for years to come to, so smart councils and smart mayors will apply for these grants, and some of these grants have a match that you match, okay, that you have, you know, may have put in ten percent or fifteen percent or twenty-five percent. So twenty-five percent means you could take the ten thousand dollars and get forty-plus thousand dollars worth of, worth of, uh, improvements. So I'm asking, since this money is not allocated, you can always change it, or some future council can always change the law, can't you, council?
Well, you can always, and you, when you approve the budget, that's where your budget line item comes in.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm asking you to do that, because we've got a lot of neglect in our parks with playground equipment and everything. Go ahead, DeeDee. Yeah, we hadn't put the goals back up or anything. Yeah, people can go in them, sure. We're not barring anybody from going in them. No, no, sir. Thank you, Mr. Locke. Mr. Locke said that it's, your word is, it's a no-brainer, Mr. Locke, that's what I love to hear you say. It's a no, so Mr. Locke has said it's a no-brainer, and, and, and Ms., uh, Ms. Moore, Council Lady Moore, you agree?
I agree.
So we can dedicate that?
Yes.
Man, I feel like, uh, uh, Teddy Roosevelt here. Okay, so it's been moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, if we could get, there's a double twenty-three on here, I don't know, maybe that should be twenty-four.
Count, it's twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Okay, if we could get a motion to adjourn. Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Shaw, that this meeting be adjourned.